Casey's driving. Okay, I'm on. Okay, it is 6:30, the appointed time of this meeting. The form of members present, and I'll call this meeting to order. So we'll start off with the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll stand, I guess I will do the invocation. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the wonderful weather we've had. Thank you for these members that are here to try to make the best decisions they can for all of these, all students. Lord, please help our country to come out of this as soon as possible and and just bring us out stronger and together, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable in their Texas way, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, we're starting off with the superintendent report. We're gonna go with student recognitions. So how we're gonna try to do this? We are gonna let, is it that how we're trying, we're gonna let them?
You'll call each campus that principal or designated wall and mute themselves and read them out.
Okay, and do I have to do anything on the computer here to do that? So we are gonna start off with East Elementary. See Barbara there, so. Okay, let me start off with. Well, that's Ken, huh? We're going with East, okay, there we go. Okay. Do what?
Do I need to click on the slideshow?
I think so.
Let's see here.
And we're trying to work through this right quick. Maybe they changed views so we could see that works this year.
Not there?
Go to President, is it President? Okay, Barbara, looks like you're up for East.
All right. Okay, so I'm going to start with our March Student of the Month, and that is Bryson Shook. Bryson is a kindergartner in Miss Bartley's class, and Miss Bartley wrote a few words about why she nominated Bryson. She says, "I am so proud of Bryson Shook and how hard he works. He is such a sweet boy who has a bright future ahead of him. He's a friend to all of his classmates and is always willing to help them. He loves to read, and the progress he has made since August is great. When he tackles some big words, his whole face lights up. Bryson shows a good attitude in and out of school, and that is admirable. He has always got a sweet smile on his face, ready to tackle the day. I've missed getting to be around him and his classmates through this tough time. While at home, he's stayed on top of his schoolwork and participated in everything I've asked for. I'm so proud of you, and you are going to rock the first grade, so great job to Bryson." All right, now then, for April, I would like to recognize Mr. Peyton Gill. And Peyton is a first grader in Miss Kennedy's class, and so Miss Kennedy, you want me to wait? Miss Kennedy said a few nice words, give me to wait, Graham?
Yes.
Very good.
No, go ahead, you're doing great.
Peyton is a hardworking, kind, and responsible young man. He's a great leader on campus and is proud to stand up for what is right. He is a helper to others in the classroom, he has a great sense of humor, and he's a joy to have in class. I'm very proud of you, Peyton.
Okay. All right, so is that all of them?
Yes, that's all, that's all for, we'll do the other one in May.
Okay. All right, so then, now we're gonna go to North. So we're gonna click on Prairie right here.
I'm good.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. March North Student of the Month is McKinley Whitaker from Miss Vincent's class, and Miss Vincent wrote this about McKinley. McKinley takes the North motto to heart. She is safe, respectful, and responsible. She is always respectful to her teachers, she is always ready to learn. She's a great listener and never fails to engage in class. McKinley is always the first one in line to lend a hand. She is always willing to go the extra mile and does so with a smile on her face. I can always count on her to follow the rules. But what I admire most about her goes beyond what I've taught her in the classroom, and that is the way she is always there for her peers. On multiple occasions, I have witnessed McKinley go out of her way to include a fellow student who is maybe having a bad day. She always does her best to lift their spirits and let them know that they have a friend. I am so honored to be McKinley's teacher this year and proud to announce McKinley Whitaker as the Student of the Month. And now for April, Student of the Month for North, Mia Reyes, she's in the second grade in Mrs. Harper's class. And Miss Harper wrote this about Mia. Mia Reyes has proved to be a worthy candidate for the Student of the Month since the beginning of the school year. She's a determined learner who refuses to quit until she succeeds. During my time observing her, she has demonstrated mastery of second-grade skills in many areas. Mia is a reserved student but is always willing to participate in class, answers when called upon, and is helpful to those who need it. Her classroom behavior and the way she presents herself makes her the perfect role model for her peers. She encompasses the attributes of a successful North Elementary student. In conclusion, Mia is a student that any teacher would be pleased to have in their classroom. As her second-grade teacher, I am proud to bestow the honor of Student of the Month upon Mia Reyes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Freeman. Okay, so South, Hannah? Are you ready, can I unmute, do I unmute her?
I got it.
There you go.
Sorry. Our March South Student of the Month was Chevy Chapin, and he is a fourth grader here, and his teacher said some very kind things. They said that Chevy is the kind of student that every teacher would love to have. He is very responsible and takes great pride in his schoolwork. Chevy has a kind heart, he is very respectful of his friends and his teachers. His peers look to him for guidance and academics and value his friendship. Whether in the classroom or on the playground, he is always fair and considerate of others. But we are very proud of his progress in fourth grade this year, and he is very deserving of this award. So we are proud of him. And then our April Student of the Month was fifth grader Nicholas McCormick. And his teachers chose him because of the outstanding work he has done, especially through this kind of difficult new learning. They said he's been working very hard during this difficult time. He stands out among his peers and has been working diligently on his online assignments and attending his virtual tutoring time. So we are super proud of him for keeping his learning going and working so hard for us.
Thank you, Ms. Rainey. All right, Junior High.
It's Laura.
Laura, okay, there you are.
Okay, the Junior High March Student of the Month is eighth grader Violetta Gallegos. And we have all of her teachers that have some brags about her that I wanted to share. Coach Fundenberg says, "You are one of the hardest workers in athletics. You're a role model and a leader by example. In the classroom, you are very intelligent, and you take your schoolwork and education seriously. You worked very hard to be the very best student that you can be. On a personal note, you're one of the most congenial and respectful students that I have this year. You always smile. Seeing you coming down the hall always makes my day brighter." Mrs. Richardson writes that you were one of the happiest students I've ever had. You're an extremely powerful example of positivity to your classmates. You won't find a harder worker than Violetta. You have a terrific work ethic and a beautiful soul. Mr. Forenza notes that he brags about you being one of the most hardworking and kind individuals that BJHS has to offer. You're always willing to help with any situation presented to you. Your multiple events like athletics band and your general schoolwork, and you give to all students. You have a positive demeanor in most stressful situations. You always have a smile on your face, and you're helpful to anyone who needs help at any activity. Mrs. Parker, she reports this. She says, "Congratulations to you, Violetta. Violetta was my career's class and was a model student. Thanks for coming to class prepared and with a fantastic attitude. You are awesome." And our April Student of the Month is seventh grader Caleb Cameron. His teachers say these things. Coach Humphrey says that Caleb has been such a joy to coach this year. His work ethic is top-notch, and he's a great leader for his classmates. I'm very thankful to have had the opportunity to coach a great kid like Caleb. Mrs. Robertson reports that Caleb never gives up. He always strives to do better, and he always has a positive attitude. Ms. Hudson brags that Caleb is so deserving of this award. He is kind-hearted and hard-working, and students know that they can always ask him for help. He is strong and self-motivated and has a bright future ahead of him. Ms. Hudson says she's so proud of you. Ms. Bloodworth says that Caleb is a delight to have in class. He excels in sports and in the classroom because of his strong character. He's well-liked among students and teachers because of his positive attitude and his fun sense of humor. Keep shining like a star, Caleb. Both Violetta and Caleb illustrate the mindset, the time is now, by embracing every moment, getting in the zone, and acting with purpose. And I'm so proud of you both.
Thank you, Mrs. Gibson. All right, so next up, Mr. Paul will come over here, he'll use this computer, and this is his Student of the Month.
I'm learning. All right, I thought I saw Caitlin on there. Caitlin, if you're on there, unmute yourself and say hi.
Hello.
There she is, good deal, okay. Okay, so congratulations to Caitlin Crook for being named the Student of Excellence of Breckinridge High School. The Student of Excellence Award is given to the student who demonstrates a high level of academic achievement, leadership, and character. Caitlin is ranked in the top quarter for class and plans to attend college in the fall. Caitlin is not only one of the top students in her class, she is also involved in several school activities, including debate, one-act play, and FFA. Ms. Grissom, who teaches dual-credit anatomy and physiology, says Caitlin truly strives for excellence. She puts 100% of her chosen activities, 100% into her chosen activities and expects to win. She's mature enough to critique and self-evaluate herself for weaknesses or faults that need to be mastered. The truly amazing part is that she works 25 to 40 hours a week to pay her own bills. She knocks the standard of excellence out of the ballpark. Mr. Best says, "I just do not see that many seniors with her level of maturity combined with compassion for others. When I think about the entire class of 2020, Caitlin is at the very top with regard to honesty, academic rigor, kindness, golden rule ethic, sincerity, tenacity, and genuineness." Ms. Farmer had this to say. Caitlin is a student whose talents are endless. She can win accolades for her talents on the stage and turn around and win an ad competition the next day. She can take you down in the debate room with her ferocity and then make you cry out with her delicate interpretation of a point. Ms. Shortis, who teaches ag, says she has served as a leader in all intra- and extracurricular activities she's participated in and has represented DHS at the state level in multiple disciplines. She's a great choice for the Student of Excellence. In summary, Caitlin is one of our top students and has set herself up for greatness in life. She is truly deserving of this honor, and we are proud to call her a buckaroo. Good job, Caitlin.
Congratulations, Caitlin, great job. Okay, let's see, it brings us to tax collection report.
Probably won't change till the next person gets it.
Yeah, it won't change. I mean, that's not the main one that everybody's sharing. Okay, so reports in here, any questions about tax collections? Looks like you're 91.78% of what's budgeted, so that's not too bad. Next one is announcements, the only announcement that I have to make is it's been an honor to serve. I appreciate the opportunity, it's a great bunch of people, you've got hard-working administrators, teachers that are working hard. It's, I've appreciated the opportunity, so thank you. Well, we'd like to thank you. This has been an unbelievable year for, from the first time that I talked to you on the phone, it was supposed to be a maintenance year. Just skate through and help us make it to get a new superintendent, and there have been, regular superintendents don't go through this much in a year, and. They all did this year. They all did, but not as interims. You were put in the right spot at that time. Well, I appreciate that, it's been an honor, thank you. So next is staff recognition. You can pull up the three people, I guess. All right, we're in all our graphics. Donna Scotty. Kim Chicken and Fish. Margaret Glaze. He's put a sticker on there of it. All right, Walmart. Marta Alvarado. And Rochelle Perry Photography. Kevin Bartley. Headstop Barbecue. Vance Moore. Rochelle Perry Photography. Tim Wade.
I have the Water Store. Kathy Taylor. Rochelle Perry Photography. Nora Guzman. Red Riding Hood Photography. Kimberly Riegel.
I have Sonic. Danielle White. And McDonald's is Antonio Ariano. And the Shirt Shop is Amanda Farm.
A report of resignations. Several resignations. At the time of the year. At the time of the year, so they're attached in here, if you have any questions, it'd be a post-session, but they're all there. And I want to add to that, there was one administrative reassignment with the resignation of Molly Johnson from her position as Chief Learning Officer. Perry Freeman was reassigned to that position, and as y'all know, that her principal position had been eliminated with the closing of the North Campus. There's that. And five comments from the public, all persons who address the board at this time must complete a registration form. We haven't had none of those turned in, so we'll move to our consent agenda. Consent agenda items, 6A, receiving consideration minutes of previous board meetings on Tuesday, March 17, 2020, Monday, March 23, 2020, Tuesday, March 24, 2020, Wednesday, March 25, 2020, and Wednesday, April 1, 2020. 6B, consider approval of March 31, 2020 financial report. And 6C, consider budget amendments. Just three budget amendments? Yeah. If you want to touch on those, yes. I'll give you a chance to find those, but the first one is for the portable buildings that will be required at the East Campus. We talked about from the beginning, there'll be four classrooms there. There were currently four classrooms at North, two of those can be moved. We've got a bid to move that of $8,500, and that's that amount there you see on that budget amendment, to have a slightly-used modular building, the price is, was $68,000, that's in a, you know, another place in the, in the, $68,000, $7,000 for the building, and then that included moving, but then there's gonna have to be a little bit of sidewalk work, some other things done to complete that. So we put, we think this is generous, $120,000 in their total to get both buildings moved and in place to start school next year.
Which building are they moving from North?
It's two classrooms that are on the north, north end, the north side of the building there.
I kind of wonder, I knew there's.
There's some on that kind of east side over there, they're on a slab, and we didn't think, we don't think they're movable.
Oh, okay, there's others that are on the, kind of the middle?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, they might not be movable, I knew they had a rest room and everything was the same as those others.
Yes, yeah.
If they don't survive, if it doesn't survive, the move?
The building that they're moving, we believe will survive the move, yes. And then the one that we got at this price is, we looked at four different proposals, the new one, a new building moved here was gonna cost $148,000. So even though this seems a little bit high, it's pretty reasonable. And so that's moving it here, like I said, we've allowed for plumbing and electrical, and we think that's more than it'll take, but it's good. Still won't have to come back to you.
Better not have too much, not enough.
Yes. Okay, and then, let's see, Chromebooks, we did buy some more Chromebooks. We're gonna buy some Chromebooks, we feel like there'll be some that'll need to be replaced also through this process of distributing to students during this time of home learning. So let me think, that's 100 Chromebooks is what that cost will cover. So that should cover some that get broken during this process. We believe that the CARES Act money will probably reimburse us for that amount, but if not, those Chromebooks will get used anyway, so. But we're pretty confident that would be taken care of with CARES Act reimbursement. Any questions? None of those that the board approved consent agenda items 6A, 6B, and 6C is presented. A motion and a second to approve consent agenda items 6A, B, and C, all those in favor? Good job, Artis. Those know, motion passes, right? That moves us to regular agenda item seven. Gary Zattler of Eagle Property Tax Appraisal and Consulting will make a presentation regarding the appeal to the tax comptroller public accounts for Stevens County property values. You can just keep it on me, so we're not going back and forth, because we may have some questions and whatnot, but. Okay, Gary, thank you for coming, and the, I guess, questions, you know, we just wanted to know where we're at, how this came about and everything, just so we can understand.
Through the process, I mean, you know, going on the school board, and I'm pretty sure where you're sitting. I sat on school board for 12 years, was president for six years, and that's an interesting job at the very best, and sometimes a little hairy, to say the least. But I've done this, as far as property tax appraisal, I've done this about 37, 38 years. And there are days that you don't have too many friends, and this coming year is going to be one of those years for the district, for what's going on. But let's go back a step. When you look at data and when you look at information, you look at it in specifics, but you also look at it in some generalities. And last year, what happened, property taxes and appraisals are split up into what's called categories. Category A is residential homes, okay, category B is multifamily law, and C is lake and ponds, so it works on it. E, our homes are in rural part of the county on acreage, that kind of thing, so. When you look at A in Breckinridge School, you look at it in the overall setting, and we did. And we leveled the appraisal and set forth a ratio and set forth some modifiers for that kind of a district. We didn't look at it last year, and that's a bad thing for us, but we didn't look at it last year in some of the specific areas. We didn't neighborhood it out properly. I spent most of the day today, and I just spent the last three, four days filling some spreadsheets. So what's gonna happen now for this year is our modifiers on our schedule are gonna change and change drastically, but only for the Two Lakes areas, and they're extremely low. And when I say extremely low, the Two Lakes, BK might be 30, 40% low. Hubbard Lake is probably somewhere close to 25% low. And we're gonna make those jumps all in one year, so we're not gonna be the nicest people in the block, so to speak, in 2020. But the sales information, and there's lots of sales information, the sales information proves out what we're gonna have to do. Now, individual sales may be higher and lower, and we can work through those as we go, but in the overall scheme, that's what happens. So now let's go back to 2019. This thing comes through that does a appraisal check, and they just pick out a sample of properties. Well, the sample that's easiest for them to work is to pick up just the sales information. And when they pick up just the sales information, they don't have control over where it is. So, and I don't want to get into detail, but I want you to understand what happened to us this year. 100% of the sales came off both the lakes. We didn't have a sale in town, we didn't have a sale in the rural city. When you get down to it and you stratify, and that's a fancy statistical term, but when you actually work it all out, DK Lake only represents about 10% of category A value for Breckinridge ISD. Hubbard Lake represents about 30% of the value for Breckinridge ISD. Town and rural property represents the rest of it, and no sales in those areas. So what happens is all the weight went into a small area, but it affected the overall, all the overall values. So we have an appeal that the state has not been heard, has not been finalized, I don't know. And I talked to them fairly often, but anyways, none of them finalized, they're all working on, like everybody. So we don't know an outcome, I've seen four, now four of the appeals that I sent in this year have come back so far, but this one has not come back. So we're still waiting on them to find out where we are. What the original, what their original results were is that we were like 25% low overall on the whole school. That we're not, we are low, but in some real specific areas, and we're in the process of correcting that for 2020 representatives. I want you to understand that. If they accept my appeal in the first stage, then there's a possibility that 2019, if they'll accept it as I presented it, in my opinion, there's a possibility that we go into what's called the first year of grace in the school funding situation as opposed to where it is now, we were so low. They said, "Well, you're too low, you're below the minimum standard." and we're going to kick you out of compliance altogether, and it's going to cost you money in twenty twenty. If they accept most of my appeal, then I feel like we're going to be in what's called the first year of grace, but we don't know that until they finalize that. So that's where we are right this minute.
Can I ask Cal?
Ask him a question, yeah.
How the other, how?
Right now, I'm three for four. I've lost one appeal and one on three appeals, okay? Of the ones I've gotten by. We've been pretty successful in our appeals. But this is a strange appeal. It's one that I did two years ago, and they wouldn't even listen to it. But we have a different regime in control and a different person in control this year. And so I'm hoping that they'll at least listen to it. If not, it's not the final settlement. They have a first round, and if he goes through this process, they come back and give us an answer. If it's not an answer we like, then the second round, you go and you actually meet with them in person, talk through the whole scenario, present the case again more detailed, hopefully, and see if they accept it. The second stage, if they don't accept it, the second stage, you still have a third stage. It was called SOA, and it's a state attorney, it's a law judge. And you go to Austin, you sit in, and really pretty much a true courtroom, and you present your case again, and the judge has the right to decide at that point in time. It's independent, it's a Texas state employee, but it's an independent judge, it's not part of any property tax department. And so we have two other levels that are used if we need it. But we're headed down that road and headed that direction with all of this. I just want you to know, it's not as, we didn't just take their first answer and say, oh, that's okay.
So on your, on some of your appeal, and pardon, your appeal for the, I guess, do you have sales from the in-town stuff that you're talking about? And we are in compliance there?
Right now, we're actually a little high in town. It's going to reduce some of the, what I'm, you have the levels of property, but the lower end class, or the lower class kind of property is actually a little bit high. And the numbers we worked out, looked at today, we're going to lower the lower class properties just a little here in town. Not a lot, but we're going to lower them just a little. And so the sales we have, and we have a good number of sales this year in town, so we're going to take a look at those and adjust those appropriately and according to most of the higher end properties from mid-level, what I, what I consider a median level house, three-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage kind of house on up, those kind of houses are going to stay basically about the same. They're not going to change one way or the other a lot in any direction in town. But on the Two Lakes, they're going to change, and they're going to change by a great amount. And then the overall, then we're going to be back where we need to be. But this last year, again, the appeal's out there, it's in their hands. Like I said, we haven't heard back, just waiting on to see what they do.
What, what's the amount, the valuation amount that we're talking about here overall?
Oh, I was going to tell you off top, I didn't bring the.
Is it easier to express in percentage for that category?
Basically, they say we're at seventy-two, seventy-three percent, which is twenty-five to twenty-six percent, too low. But it's based on, they come in and look at, and just going to try to see if this makes sense, but they come in and look at this little circle right here of properties, and tell you that because this sample of property right here is this way, then everything in this whole county is the same way, okay? And they'll look at two or three or four percent of the properties, and then say the rest of the properties are exactly. Well, they did that, but they looked at the sales from both lakes, and only, I don't know, five or six, not very many, sales from here in town. And so they overweighted those areas, and that's the appeal, and that's the basis of the appeal that I've got in front of them right this minute.
And they look at a small area, it can be a whole different thing, but.
You look at a sample, I mean, it's statistical, there's reasons they do what they do, but you look at a sample, and then you apply the outcome of the sample to the whole universe, which is the school.
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
So it's going to, but it, there's going to be a substantial increase in that, at those lakes, I think, if you're that much.
Yes, oh, yeah. Now, some of the, some of the folks at the lakes are going to see, and I'd really rather this not come from y'all, because you don't need the enemies either. There'll be some lakes, some people at the lakes see a thirty percent increase in value, without a doubt, at least. Maybe more than that, but at least that.
All right, and so, but this is, so this is the first year, though, that, twenty nineteen was the first year that we're out of compliance.
Because it was, it falls under a real weird special rule. If you're below eighty-five or whatever the percentage is, if you're below a certain percentage overall, then they don't give you the first year of grace. Normally, you would have a first year of grace no matter what happened, and you wouldn't be in this predicament. You wouldn't be facing these questions. But because this one's so far low, then you fall out from under those rules of grace, and so we're, we're in that situation. So. And y'all have all probably been here, and I've been around the district for quite a few years and known the folks and everything else. I live in Jacksboro, so I come through here going to see my parents in San Angelo and different things. Goes back, part of this goes back, what, five or six years ago, when the lake was almost dry or was dry. Believe it or not, even then, the sales, they weren't going down, but they weren't going up, they were just stable out there. And we, and everybody wanted to come in and say, well, it's, it's worth less now, because nothing's happening, you don't have any water, blah, blah, blah. But even then, we held the value stable because they were stable. The sales, if somebody sold a property, they sold it for what it had it on the roll for at that time. But now, had three or four years of water, solid water, it's been up, everything's good, and people are, people are moving in and doing, and buying properties like that, and they're going up.
So do you want to explain how that creates a loss of state funding for the school district, or you'll need to explain that?
No, I, I mean, I've been on both sides of that this year. I went from a property average district to a property wealthy district while I was at Jacksboro, and that was a real treat. We got sent it right away, about five million dollars the very first year we were a property wealthy district. To answer your question, it's a, it's a, and it's a real backwards calculation, but they take the percentage, and they say of that, and I don't know the exact numbers on the tax rate right now, but it's the, the first eighty-six cents or something of your total tax rate is applied, and they take, they remove that money. So if you're at seventy-five percent, just make the numbers easy. And it was a dollar that they were looking at, they'd take away twenty-five cents of the person, of the dollar. So they would take away that amount of money, they would reduce your, your local, your state funding by that amount. But it's not, it's not dollar for dollar, and it's not, it's a, like I say, it's a real weird calculation at very best, and it's not based on your total tax rate either, it's based on a reduced part of your tax rate. But it is a reduction in school funding, and it is something that hits in the twenty, what would be your, your twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Your budget, everything that you're getting ready to look at tonight, I guess. So if that happens, but again, I don't know right this minute, I can't give you an answer one way or the other. I know where I think we're headed, but do they say yes or no, I don't know for sure.
Basically, we should have, we should have got more money from residential taxes coming in. We should have got more taxes coming in. The fact that they're saying we were low, then they want to, they could penalize us for.
They're not, they're not going to give us the amount of money that they think we should have collected right. It's, it's, that's where the gap is.
We're not going to get the extra money that we should have gotten, but we might get penalized as well.
Well, that is the penalty, as they.
Penalty is a reduction.
Yeah, so they, so. They typically pay state aid based on your tax collection for that year. But because we're out of variance, instead of using the local appraisal district's values to determine that state aid, they're going to use the comptroller's values. So the difference between local values and comptroller's values, based on that formula of eighty-six cents on the first part of your tax rate, is what you lose in state aid.
So if I, if I've got seventy-five million dollars on the roll, and that's not what we have, but if I had seventy-five million dollars on the roll, and the state says it ought to be a hundred million, they're going to apply that eighty-six cents to give us a hundred million, whatever the difference is, is what the penalty is going to be.
So how is it that we got out of compliance? I'm trying to understand that, because I, I know.
No, let's, and it's a good question. The biggest hazard we face in the appraisal district is all our data is by choice or by, it's not mandatory. If I send out, you know, if three hundred properties sell, and I send out three hundred sales letters to all these new owners and all the sellers, which effectively is six hundred letters, if I send that out, we're getting back about ten or fifteen percent. People don't send the information back in. Real estate agents, you don't have an MLS out here, and even if you do, a lot of the MLS people, I've been kicked out of the East Texas MLS organization about a year and a half, two years ago. We just don't get some of the information, we don't get enough of the information back typically through, you know, different years. This year, and I was looking at it this afternoon, just going through it again, but this year with all the property that I think probably was sold in this county, we have forty, forty or forty-five residential sales as well. And I think that's probably ten or fifteen percent of what's actually been sold. We just don't get the information, and when you don't have the information, you're really, you know, using old, old saying, you're throwing your hat at a really small nail on the wall. It's just hard to do. But we didn't have a lot of the lake sales in years past, and we do, we don't have a lot this year. I think we got sixteen or eighteen out of the lake here, and we've only got two sales on BK, but they're extremely low.
So would, so like if, I guess if a house was sold with financing, that stuff goes into the courthouse and county clerk, does that come back?
If it's sold with warranty deed?
Yes.
Then we pick it up.
Okay.
Because we get the deeds, and we get that information. But if it's not with a loan, then it's not mandatory. Texas is not a mandatory state.
Well, I mean, I would think generally, I mean, maybe the lake properties would be kind of cash sales, but I mean, I think generally.
Well, when it's a second home, and when it, you know, it's inherited money occasionally, it's second homes occasionally, it's, and so, yeah, a lot of them are cash sales. Or owner finance. Probably half the sales out here at Hubbard, are never advertised, never listed with anybody. And so only, you know, the person driving down the street that saw a sign in the yard, picked up the phone, called the number, and bought the house. So nobody but those two people know what they bought and sold it for.
Well, then how did the state, or the state, how did the state figure it out?
Well, the state, because it says Texas comptroller at the top of the letterhead, people send that back about three times as many times as they do to us. You know, they think it's mandatory, if the Texas comptroller writes you a letter, you're going to answer that letter. Well, more people answer the letter from them than they do to us. Now, I will tell you, and this is, this has to do with commercial property, but the state started using a resource, a company that gets all the USBA, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac loans, all that on, on commercial properties. You know, long story short, I started buying that resource this year to be able to appraise commercial properties, because I think, I think commercial properties are underpriced across Texas. Because very little information ever given on the, they never hit the public purview. I, I, I can't tell you how sincerely sorry I am we are in this position. What I can tell you is, it's not going to stay there, okay? And I will do everything I can to defend it and to take this appeal through the processes and through the steps to get it back where we need to get it, and as soon as I know you'll. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much, Artis.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Sure. You said. Okay. Agenda item eight, resolution of board regarding delegation to superintendent for waivers.
Okay, that's pretty self-explanatory.
Now, go ahead and explain it.
You'll be, okay, I didn't mean to cut anyone.
No, I was.
It's going to give the opportunity for the superintendent, there's, there's several waivers that are, that are going to have to be filed with PEA because of response to COVID-nineteen, and that will give, it just says superintendent, no name there, because you're fixing to switch here, and that will give Mr. Allen the opportunity to file those on behalf of the board, and he won't have to bring each one of those to you individually. So, so I think that's a good, it's a good thing to have happen, so you don't have to address those, or maybe have some special meetings to get them timely filed.
Are you ready to make a motion?
Oh, yeah, no, I was just going to ask if there are any questions, and then go ahead, you're good.
I move that the board approves the resolution delegating approval of waivers to superintendent for all waivers related to COVID-nineteen.
Have a motion and a second, that the board approves the resolution delegating approval of waivers to the superintendent for all waivers related to COVID-nineteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, Artis. All right, agenda item nine, low attendance waiver for days of low attendance due to students' illness in December. I guess y'all saw the, what we had there, so same deal, any questions? All right, I'll read, I'll read the background then, so everybody can hear. This waiver allows for days of attendance for the district or a campus to fall below ten percent or more below the previous year average daily attendance to be excluded from the current year ADA. Exclusion of these days will have a positive impact on funding. I've attached, or we have attached a chart that reflects the days that fall within the guidelines for low attendance waiver.
I move that we approve the waiver for the days of low attendance due to students' illness in December.
Have a motion and a second, that the board approves the waiver for days of low attendance due to students' illness in December. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, then item ten, consideration and action to purchase a portable building to be placed at East Elementary. Go ahead, Earl, you can go and say this.
Okay. So I put the background information here, I've already spoken to this a little bit when we talked about the budget amendment, but this is for a two-classroom portable building with restrooms. Brian Dietrich did the majority of the work, so the cost of the buildings is there. There will be, like I said earlier, some subsequent costs, plumbing, sewer, some permits with the city to get the buildings moved in and placed there, so. So we think between moving the one building and getting this done, it'll be, like I said earlier, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Actually, we think it'd be less than that, but, but that should cover it. But this is actually just to cover the cost of the purchase of that building. Anything, what is this policy, anything over twenty-five thousand dollars, I think the board has to approve a purchase, whether it's approved in the budget or not, so we're just asking your approval for the purchase of this building.
And this, this building will have restaurants in it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I was with the drawings, and I didn't.
Yes. Yeah, that's the dimensions, the picture we had had restaurants. I hope we didn't miss that. If we didn't, Brian may have to come back to you in a month.
So do we know, like, the location of where, kind of where they're going to be putting it east?
Uh, yes, on the.
It's got a pretty good drop.
There's a pretty good drop. These people that, that moved this building have a plan for, they send us a plan, and they use a pretty wide concrete base, and they put twelve of them down, and then they use concrete, concrete blocks. But they're going to, they're going to level out where they're going to put that base block, and then concrete blocks above that to level it out. So we believe that should satisfy that.
Okay, so we didn't have a motion on this, right?
Yes.
I move that the board approve the purchase of the portable building to be placed at East Elementary as presented.
Have a motion and a second. Let's do the, oh. Motion and second to approve purchase of the portable building to be placed at East Elementary as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, number eleven. Consideration and action for approval of a resolution of board regarding policy EIC local class rank. So, Earl, if you can.
Yeah, I can talk about that real quick. You know, policy E I C local says that typically the class rank for the graduating class, uh, ends at the end of the fifth, six weeks, and because we close the campuses prior to the end of the fifth, six weeks, uh, there's no way to include that fifth, six weeks. Uh, there was potentially, there was some discussion at the high school about when's the, the best day to back that up? Do we back it up to the end of the fourth, six weeks, which was semi-complete, but, uh, but it was determined by the administration and we all agreed on this that probably the best and cleanest way to do that would just be end of that semester, to make a clean calculation for that semester, uh, to be, to determine the class rank for this class of students.
So basically their GPA will be up until the first, end of the first semester, the end of the year.
Yes. And there'll probably have to be some further consideration for the, for the current classes in high school, the undergrad, I mean, the un, the lower, lower level classes, the freshmen, sophomore, juniors, how's that going, how's that semester going to impact them? Are you going to exclude it totally? Are you going to include that four, six weeks? So there'll probably be some further discussion than a determination made for those, uh, for those lower classes in the future.
I'm sure there'll be some guidance from T E A on that as well.
The T E A or TASB, I'm sure there'll be some guidance.
Yeah. I move that the board approve the resolution suspending policy E I C local for the class of twenty twenty, allowing the high school principal and counselor to use first semester grades to determine class rank. One second. Have a motion and a second that the board approve the resolution suspending policy E I C local for the class of twenty twenty, allowing the high school principal and counselor to use first semester grades to determine class rank. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Moving on to twelve, another policy here, consideration and action to adopt policy D E A local as revised by TASB Policy Services.
Last month, we asked you to take, uh, action to, uh, for, what, what did we call that? Resolution, the resolution to adjust D E A local so we could pay premium pay, and TASB has recommended that if you adopted that resolution, that you go ahead and adopt the new policy. Uh, there were a couple of concerns with that. Uh, we found out after we were given the direction by TASB to adopt that resolution that if you're getting reimbursed by FEMA money for that premium pay, they will not reimburse it unless you had previously had that in your, had that in your policy prior to the COVID situation. Uh, but we, we believe that the other stimulus money, uh, will pay for it. They won't have the restrictions on it that TASB had, but they recommended that we go ahead and, and go ahead and make that permanent adjustment to this policy.
I move that the board update policy D E A local as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second that the board update policy D E A local as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes. All right. Agenda item thirteen, consider employment of administrative personnel. Recommendation to name the recommended junior high school principal twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Uh, Ms. Ms. Brown has been in.
Yes, in some form, we need to go.
Yes, yes, we will. Uh, I mean, I go ahead and announce her name or read this.
Before you think action.
Yeah. Okay. So Ms. Brown has been recommended for the principal position. Uh, we, we know her, and then we'll, we'll go to an executive session to, to discuss the details. So, all right. What do we do? Yes. Yes. Okay, we're back. And we are on agenda item 13, consider employment of administrative personnel. So. Do I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the employment of administrative personnel, Jennifer Brown as junior high principal for 2020, 2020, 2021 school year on a probationary contract subject to assignment and reassignment.
Second, I have a motion and a second that the board approve the employment of administrative personnel named Jennifer Brown as junior high principal for the 2020, 2021 school year probationary contract subject to assignment and reassignment. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Regular agenda item 15, approval, approval of superintendent's contract. So we did some work hammering out the, the contract with Mr. Allen. There were two, I think two minor details that we adjusted on. And so we can, there was, I mean, I think it'll be fine, but we can go into closed session to discuss it since it's an employment deal. And I can explain all that to you and we can make adjustments as needed. So once again, going into closed session at 7:41. And Brian can stay. All right, orders, we got you back. Okay. So. To regular agenda item 15, approval of superintendent's contract. I have a motion. I have a motion and a second that the board approve the contract for Brian Allen, loan finalist as Breckenridge ISD superintendent. All those in favor? All right, opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. We're, we're excited and I know you are. All right. Regular agenda item 16, approval of offer to employ new superintendent.
T A S B makes us do both. That's why there's.
Yeah, okay. All right, so Brian Allen was named loan finalist and Allen, April 1st, 2020 is superintendent for Breckenridge ISD. So do I have a more motion? This is to him. So we've approved him. Now we're making motion to appoint or to hire him.
I move that the board approve the offer to employ new superintendent Brian Allen.
I have a motion and a second that the board approve the offer to employ new superintendent Brian Allen. All those in favor? Opposed? All right, motion passes. Okay. Regular agenda item 17, hearing of a policy F N G local level three grievance. Hearing will be conducted in closed session due to confidential nature of student information. Action, if any, will be taken in open session. Do I need? Okay, and due to this having something to do with. I need, I just need to refuse myself from this, is the best way to put it. So we will now be going into closed session. Absolutely. All right. And so with that being said, Jeff Dewey, the, the vice president will be conducting the closed session meeting.